I'll call this by your councilman to order, and could we have a certification of the quorum, please?
Mayor Jason Knight.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem place for J.R. Haskins.
Here.
Councilmember place one Ruth Gamario Smith.
Here.
Councilmember place two Elise Jacoon.
Here.
Councilmember place three Luanne Lou Martin.
Here.
Mayor, there's a quorum of the council present to conduct this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now could everyone please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
As we come together for this meeting, let us take a moment to reflect on the purpose that brings us here, our commitment to the city of Aransas Pass. We are grateful for all who make this city what it is and for everyone who gives their time and heart to make it a better place to live. May every meeting be guided by wisdom, respect, and a sincere desire to serve. Let our conversations be thoughtful, our decisions fair, and our actions always rooted in what's best for our residents and for the future of our city. May our daily work strengthen our community and inspire all of us to serve with purpose and heart. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're going to go into presentations, and we're going to conduct the swearing in of the newly appointed city secretary. Sal, I'm going to go by Sal Hernandez.
It's going to be, this swearing in will be conducted by municipal court judge Henry Morales.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi Judge.
Hey.
I. So I'm not as a third.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of city secretary.
Of the office of city secretary.
Of the city of Aransas Pass.
Of the city of Aransas Pass.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinance.
And ordinance.
Of this city.
Of this city.
And I furthermore.
And I furthermore.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will not.
That I will not.
directly.
Directly.
nor indirectly.
Indirectly.
Pay.
Pay.
Offer.
Offer.
Or promise to pay.
Or promise to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Nor promise.
Nor promise.
To contribute.
To contribute.
Any money.
Any money.
Or valuable thing.
Or valuable thing.
Or promise.
Or promise.
Any public office.
Any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
As a reward.
As a reward.
For the giving.
For the giving.
Or withholding.
Or withholding.
Of a vote.
Of a vote.
To secure.
To secure.
My appointment.
My appointment.
So happy thoughts.
So happy thoughts.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we're going to have a presentation by Travis Pusky or Pusky, I never forget.
Pusky.
I was for, I was like first time, chief operations officer for the New Oasis River Authority overview of the new water for South Texas project.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council for having me here today. I'm going to give a brief presentation about the water project that we're working on. I had a chance to give this to staff and the mayor a couple of weeks ago, and we've done it at about forty cities throughout South Texas over the last several months. So I'm going to go over some few slides, and please stop me if you have a question about anything that's on the slide. If it's not on the slide, let's wait a little bit. I think I can answer most of your questions if we go through the process, but I'll have plenty of time to answer any questions that you guys might have through this presentation. All right, thank you. So I am Travis Pusky. I'm the chief operations officer for the New Oasis River Authority, and I do appreciate the chair that you guys are sitting in. I was a council member and mayor of both Texas, just up the road up 181, for twelve years, so I truly understand and appreciate the decisions you guys make. So thank y'all for having me here today. So if we can go to the next slide, please? So, for those who don't know about the New Oasis River Authority, it kind of shows the outline on the map there of who, what, and what we represent. It's about eighteen thousand square miles of citizens that we represent in Oasis River Authority. Starting up in the hill country at Rock Springs, up in Edwards County is where all y'all's water starts that y'all drink from. That's where it starts. It goes through all that area and that basin and ends down here in the coastal bin. We are part of four water planning groups. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar about the water planning process that the state does. You guys are in region N, which the New Oasis River Authority is one of the planning, is the planning sponsor for. I am also a voting member of region L, which is the majority of y'all's water starts and comes from, starts up in region L and it comes down through the rest of the coastal bin. But what you're looking at there are the numbers that the regional water planning process shows you that we are in a deficit. That's a shortage of water for the four planning regions that the New Oasis River Authority covers. What that equivalates to, by 2030, we're anticipating a 270 million gallons a day deficit of water. That means we're using 270 million gallons a day more than we're producing of new water through our basin. So that kind of shows you why we're doing this project. That number by 2070 jumps to 450 million gallons a day. And a couple of things about that process is how we come up with those numbers. Why we think it's actually a little bit worse than that, or maybe a lot worse than that, is that choosing 2020 census data, which if you've been working through the process or involved with the census data, 2020 census data, we believe was flawed. It was, of course, COVID, so a lot of data didn't get turned in. And also, South Texas and all of Texas has a lot of growth since 2020. We've been one of the fastest growing states in the country by far, and a lot of people are moving in. So that data information shows you with numbers that we believe are, the population is quite a bit higher than that. Another process through the water planning process is we do not count any new industry or like data centers, anything like that, through this planning process. You can only use industry customers or those data centers, those types of things who have existing contracts for water as we're planning this. We cannot project out new industry that comes into the region. And if you're familiar with data centers that's coming out, there's data centers being planned all over South Texas and all over Texas. Those are not included in these water projections. Next slide. So that shows you Lake Corpus Christi. That shows you our water levels. And to tell you kind of where we're at, those are a few weeks old. That number now is, as of today, I just looked before I came here, is our total reservoirs at 11.2% full, not 12.6. So as of today, we are at a total of 11.2% low in our reservoirs. Next slide. So, we are building a D-SAL project, and we're going to go over the different pieces of how we're going to do that. The first is we have a lease with Harbor, on Harbor Island from the port of Corpus Christi. If you're not familiar with Harbor Island, I think most of you might be, but if you're getting on the ferry going into Port A, it's right, that property right there to the left, as you can see there in the picture. So right while you're waiting on the ferry, you'll be staring at the facility where we're going to be building our D-SAL plant. We have a 50-year lease agreement on that land from the port of Corpus Christi with a 30-year option. So basically, we will have, able to own and operate there under a current lease agreement for 80 years, where we're going to be building our D-SAL facility. That also includes the right-of-ways that the port already owns, which we'll go through a little bit later, and the permitting process, which they've already started a while back to get the permits for this project. Next slide. So that kind of shows you a little bit overview of what we're going to be building there. We will be using a P3 partnership to build and operate our D-SAL facility. So there's a lot of questions about NRA staff, and do we have enough staff to do this? We do not plan to build nor operate the facility. We will have a private company come in that does this all over the world. They will build the facility, and then they will also operate it. And our decision-making through this process is, one is we only have a few large-scale D-SAL plants. That's anything over five million gallons in the, all across the US. There's none here in Texas. There's one in California, and there's a couple in Florida that have produced large-scale D-SAL projects. So we don't have the workforce here to do that. So we will be working with companies who build this type of thing and operate it throughout the world. I believe on any given day, it's about 100 billion gallons of water is produced through D-SAL throughout the world. We just don't do it in America very much. Even though our wonderful Navy invented it on their carriers and their subs a long time ago, we just don't do it here. So we will be looking for a company that does do that. With that, we were starting that bidding process here. Actually, it's November, so that within, we are through that process right now of bidding out who's going to be building that. We plan to be under contract by February of 2026 with the company that's going to be building that facility. And, okay, there you go. Next slide. That kind of gives you an overview of where we're going to be building it. So you can kind of see Harbor Island, but then you can see off is where we're going to be putting the, that's where we're going to take in the intake and the discharge will all be offshore into the Gulf. So there will be no direct impact to any of the bays, estuaries, the ship channels, any of that. Everything will be taken offshore. And that question has come up, that is in a non-parking area for the boats that come into the port. That's one of the, why we picked that location, so we don't have to worry about boats dropping their anchors and messing up any of our infrastructure or anything like that. We are out of their boat parking, ready for people waiting to come into port. Next slide. So, a little bit about that pipeline infrastructure. So Harbor Island, we will be 3.1 miles from Harbor Island, roughly 1.3 miles offshore is where we'll have our intake pipe. That'll be a 12-foot diameter pipe. And our permit is to bring in 312 million gallons of water. That depth will be about 35 feet. And then our discharge pipe will be 3.6 miles or 1.8 miles offshore at 44 feet deep. That's also a 12-foot diameter pipe. And the discharge permit is for 191 million gallons of water. So roughly, you need about 300 million gallons of water to produce 100 million gallons of drinkable water. We'll put 200 million gallons back into the Gulf, just kind of rounding our numbers there on that.
None of this will go into the bays at all?
Everything will be into the Gulf. We will be, the discharge is 1.8 miles into the Gulf, and that's at a depth of 44 feet, and we'll get into a little bit of the, how we're going to do that and the environmental impacts of that. One of the key things about that also is that that depth, if there is, are you familiar, we do get red tide and some other of those biological things that happen in the Gulf. We're deep enough that none of that will affect any of our intake water. If there's an oil spill like the Deepwater Horizon happens, something like that, there's a lot of oil rigs out there. We are also below the depth that even that will affect any of our intake pipeline. And then, if we have a direct impact by hurricanes, all those types of things, we're also at a depth that we won't be directly impacted. There might be sand and stuff might get pushed over our facility. We'll have to get that cleaned out. But we're a deep enough spot that we won't have any direct impact to our pipeline and intake infrastructure, outside of having to remove sand from any of those types of events. That way, in case whatever happens in the future, we'll be able to keep producing water as much as possible.
And I think, I forgot to ask you this Travis, and I've talked to Kristen about this some. Will this be like a typical osmosis plant with like dual membrane filters inside of it?
Yes and no. The technology's a lot more increased since then, but this is a reverse osmosis facility. If you have a, if you have one underneath your sink to get the hard water out, imagine that, but scaled up dramatically is what we're going to be doing.
I'm so sorry, it decided to restart.
Uh-oh. Well, any questions while we're waiting on the restart?
Not yet.
But you did say that the two gallons per, because it takes three gallons of river water to make one gallon of RO.
Correct.
The two gallons will be dumped back into the Gulf.
Put back into the ocean.
So they will, they will not go to waste.
Correct. No, yeah, it'll just be pushed back, that's the discharge permit. That water will be pushed back into the ocean. And we'll talk a little bit about the salinity levels and all those things and how that impact is.
Okay, what, what advantage is this to the city?
Well, we'll get to that a little bit, how if you guys would like to participate and purchase that water. We'll talk about the reservation fees and how y'all could be part of it if the city chooses to do that.
How much will it increase our water bills for our citizens monthly?
Well, there's a slide where we kind of will go over through all of that, how that, what the price is going to be. So that'll be a decision you guys have to make on how that affects your pricing and all of that. And there's a, there's a lot of things happening over the next three years as far as your water bills and other projects that are happening, and the lack of water. So, water bills will increase. I mean, I'm, we're not going to tell you they're going to decrease. There's, that's not. What we're here to do is provide sustainable drinking water, especially in these times of droughts where you don't have to go into water restrictions.
Right, and that's most appreciated for sure. I'm very concerned, I guess, because you're using a third party to build it and to man it, that our water bill is going to be astronomical compared to what it is today.
Through the bidding process, we will be able to have it as low as possible. And it's going to be part of their contract, is they have to produce water at a certain price point, and it has to be dependable water at that price point. So that's one of the things, we want to have the cost as low as possible, but we want dependable water as well. That's just as important as the price point, because having a low price point but undependable water doesn't solve it. So we got to have both of those things done. That will tell you that many, many countries throughout the world do rely strictly on D-SAL water. For instance, the country of Israel, they've got no fresh water there, and they've actually turned their whole country into a breadbasket for the whole region. They are able to produce crops because it's all through the D-SAL that they have. Saudi Arabia, Japan, I mean, list, I mean, every Caribbean island you go to, you go to any resort in Jamaica or anyplace, they're drinking D-SAL water.
That, speaking of the drinking, are there any health concerns with the, with the water? Like, long-term health concerns with the, with the health and safety of drinking the D-SAL water?
No, so we are filtering out everything. We're not adding anything to the water. We're taking water and we're cleaning it, taking the salt out, and we're also taking out other things like the PFAB, the microplastic, things you might have heard about, other minerals, all that's taken out through this RO process. Basically, when we're done making this water, we're taking it back to H2O. We are just, we are providing you water. That's, a lot of water you have now has got other contaminants in it from the rivers, lakes, runoff, all those things. We are, through our process, we take it back to H2O. We have to put a little bit of calcium after we're done, because we'll, we'll corrode out the pipes. If you just run shake water through your water pipes, it'll actually destroy the pipeline, and there'll be a little bit of chlorine for disinfective purposes, but that'll be all we're doing. We're not adding anything into it. We're taking it back to water.
Okay, and how often is that testing going to be done, do you know, to test the water?
All the ti, I mean, if it's not daily, it'll be multi-daily or weekly, monthly. It's going to be tested constantly.
Just so that the concern for the citizens, they know that that testing is being done regularly on the water.
It'll be monitored basically non-stop. There's a data system that you put in through these systems that you're, I mean, your board's running constantly on what that water looks like as it's going through the process.
Okay.
From what I'm looking at here, excuse me.
Go ahead.
From what I'm looking at here, you're piping it into Aransas Pass, correct?
We, the pipeline will come through Aransas Pass and then go through all of South Texas. So yes, it'll come through y'all's back door to, from the Harbor Island and Aransas Pass, and it'll keep going on to all the other facilities that are going to be purchasing the water. And you guys will have an opportunity, if you choose, to have a direct tap to that line if y'all would like.
Okay, you're running this through our town, where?
We haven't, the full pipeline has not been established yet, because we're still finding the last couple of customers that we know where the water is going. So I can't tell you exactly where, but that'll go through the same pipeline process that any oil pipeline, anything else that runs through y'all's town. There's a, there's a process for how these lines go through towns.
And it pays us to go through.
Have to pay royalties to any of the property owners to run a pipeline.
It's, it's, we're, any other utility infrastructure, whether it's a power line, water line, anything, it's, we'll go through that same process.
The D-SAL plant you said you did in California and Florida, how far offshore did you go?
They actually dump right at the, the ones in Florida dump in their bays. They don't dump it into the Gulf. The one in California dumps it right at, they have a little inlet channel on the Pacific Ocean. They dump it right there. We'll be the only one in America that's going to take it offshore.
And have they had any effects with the marine life at all?
They have not had any effects. California's plant's been running for almost 25 years. They are, I mean, heavily monitored in California, and they've had zero effect to any of their marine or wildlife.
And that's like easy, obtainable information that we can find?
Oh, absolutely. There's, if you know anything about California, they are very hard. They're on environmental impacts and the studies and those things.
You can pull that one up on YouTube, because I actually saw it on YouTube.
It's called Carlsbad, California, where that plant is located at.
Yeah.
We've, we've, we've been to both of these facilities already, including Carlsbad.
And I guess the only question, I mean, we've talked about it, but I know nobody else outside of here, if you know, they, they have, they have limited information. I'm just getting asked like, who's going to actually pay for the first phase of the plant?
Well, the New Oasis River Authority is bonding out and building the project. So we were, we are going to own the facility, and we're taking out the debt for that. The payments will come from the customers, the cities who end up off-taking that water. Right now, we have a little over three dozen cities or water districts from this area all the way up into the San Antonio area, because our water issue goes all the way north. I showed you that map earlier. Y'all's drinking water starts up where we're at, top of our, they're out of water too. And they're keep drinking the groundwater, which flows the river water, which flows what the water you guys get. So that, we have to think about this haul over South Texas, not fix, we can't just fix one water problem. We got to fix the whole area. So we're going to take that water all the way up into the San Antonio region and communities along the way.
Do you have funding for this plan already?
We have private funding, yes. We are working on state funding to lower the costs. Tomorrow, election day, Prop 4, that's one of the, Prop 4 has a billion dollars into new water fund, which is basically what this project was invented for. So there's chances to get that cost lowered. What that final end-up cost to your customer is going to be through state funding, which we are currently working on, and people will be voting on right now, as we speak.
I know you've got a, got a plan here that you're going over and explaining to us and all of this, but we've been talking with other people also that are telling us a lot about this. You've got three water districts here, New Oasis, San Francisco, and what's the third one? New Oasis County, New Oasis Water District, San Francisco Water District.
You're talking about South Texas Water District?
Okay. None of y'all are telling us the same thing. Why is that?
Well, this is our project, so our project isn't with.
You're not a, you're not doing a project with the others either?
No, we're not doing a project, their projects are separate projects. One of them, the city of Corpus has bought into our project. They're going to be purchasing water from us. But this is our project. We are not, we do not have any partners in this project outside of us leasing from the port of Corpus Christi. Now, we have plenty of customers, communities like you guys who are going to be taking this water, but this is a solely venture of the New Oasis River Authority.
Question for you. Did City of Corpus buy into your program to sell it to the other cities surrounding, if the cities choose not to be a part of this?
They purchased 50 MGD to put into their general water portfolio. They need 140 MGD to complete all of their requirements for all the community customers. We're not involved in how they're going to come up with the other 90. I don't know the answers to that, but they had purchased 50 MGD for, to put into their overall water portfolio.
You just, I'm just kind of curious as to why you're all not getting together and doing the same thing.
I can't speak about the politics level of that side. I will tell you that this is a project we are, been working on for a long time to move forward, because we see the need of water coming down the pipeline. And I, actually, I wish I would have had this conversation with you about three years ago instead of today.
I wouldn't hear three years ago.
There's many projects that do need to happen. Then we are one of the many.
Sorry, I think we're back.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Okay, but how long will it take you to put this online?
We'll get to that in just a second. I'll get caught up on some slides. I'm going to move through some of them fast, and sorry to answer the question. If you go to slide eight, okay, that one. So that kind of shows you how we are going to be building our pipeline and then take out into the Gulf. There's a lot of concerns, some of the other projects, about what's going to happen to environmentally. We've looked at all of that to make sure we have the best project that we can to not do anything environmentally. So at Harbor Island, we're going to bore down to 80 feet. We're going to have a 14-foot boring system that's going to put in that 12-foot pipe, and then we're going to pop up into the Gulf underneath, so that we will not destroy any of the estuaries, the bays, the beachheads, any of those things. Everything will be completely underground, and so that we do not have any impact on any of that environmental, any of those environmental areas. That's very, very important to us, and we learned a lot through watching other people try to do their projects. So we wanted to make sure that we were environmentally safe as possible. Because the New Oasis River Authority isn't just about producing water. We are stewards of the environment. Our job is to protect the New Oasis River area, so we want to make sure we do our best job with that. So this kind of shows you an overall high picture of what that's going to look like, how we don't affect any of your fishing areas or anything like that. Next slide. So by doing this way, we were able to avoid almost every environmental impact possible by going this route. There were two things that you just can't avoid. One of them is salinity. We are going to be putting brine water back into the Gulf. I mean, that's the process of doing D-SAL water. But we believe where we're putting it out has the least. But we believe where we're putting it out has the least impact to any aquatic life. Uh, the other one we completely couldn't avoid was larva fish, uh, redfish spawn out into the Gulf. But they don't usually go below that twenty-foot barrier. So we believe we're going to be, all that will be under, where they're spawning areas. We won't have any major impact to any of the spawning areas for those larval fish out there in the Gulf. And we've had, worked with several of our environmental partners on this to try to alleviate any possible thing. No project is perfect, but we believe we came up with the best solution possible to do the, uh, intake and discharge offshore. Next slide. Uh, so yeah, that shows you where the pipeline comes into Port A, our, our Aransas Pass. We talked a little bit about it. That's all already pipeline easements that the port already has and came with our lease agreement with them. Next slide. Um, I, this slide needs to be updated from the last couple of weeks. We received two other permits already. So we're down to just two permits that we haven't received yet. And we believe we will have all those in the next sixty to ninety days. Next slide. So that black line shows you where the water's going. Again, this isn't just a coastal bin, uh, water issue. This is a regional water issue. Again, your water starts up at the Hill Country area and works its way down. If we don't help solve some of their water issues, you can kiss the water coming down the river goodbye. And we want to alleviate that by having as many customers in the north also get off of their groundwater supply, which affects the river water to those projects. So we have a, a loop that's coming to the west side, going towards, uh, the city of Hondo and communities up into there. And then there's a right, right branch that's going to go all the way up to the city of Kyle. They're all drinking from the same Carizo Aquifer that helps replenish all of our lakes and rivers down there. So it's important to get as much of the water to any of those communities who are drinking our groundwater as possible. And then of course, the water will have water stay here in the coastal bin region. As of today, our first round of a hundred MGD is basically sold out with about fifty-eight million gallons staying here in the coastal bin and forty-two million gallons going north. Next slide. A little bit about the pipe design. Uh, there'll be roughly an eighty-four inch pipeline that's going to take that main line from Harbor Island up to San Antonio. Within branches coming off of that line. We've already started the procurement process of that. And we will be actually voting on those at our board meeting next week on who is going to be designing the, we have five segments of pipeline. And they're going to be starting that work here in the beginning of twenty-twenty-six in January. We'll have all the contracts negotiated with them to start working on that pipeline process. Next slide. That one shows you our overall timeline. We are here at the end of twenty-twenty-five. If we go through some of the processes, but basically our goal is to have water, um, the plant working by twenty-twenty-nine with the finish of our pipeline going by twenty-thirty-two. Of course, you guys are the closest people to the plant. So your pipeline should be in that twenty-twenty-nine timeline. While it'll take us a little bit, we'll, uh, longer to get out to some of the further reaches of where we're going to be taking this water to. Next slide. Cost per thousand. So right now, everything we believe is we are going to be within the ten to fifteen dollars cost per thousand. Yes, that price doesn't sound cheap. It, it, it's, and today you're going to, nope, it doesn't sound cheap. I will promise you in five or six years, you're going to be wishing for projects that your cost is going to be between five and fifteen dollars per thousand. Couple of things that they're going to change that price is the state participation loan. And then of course, we're talking about position four, which are being voting on tomorrow. We have that fifteen-dollar cost as if we have to bond everything out through our private banking firms. And it's just, we just take basic loan and build this project. As you get down to ten dollars based on how much state participation comes in and how much money we get through the Water Development Board and Prop four and those type of things. We'll be working on getting that cost down as low as possible, but that's a general ballpark of where we're going to be at the cost. Next slide. So the last one is your reservation contracts. If you guys would like to participate and reserve that water. And that would guarantee you a water amount. So if y'all were to say select a million gallons of water to guarantee to your city. You will have a tap on that main pipeline that comes through Aransas Pass. And if you say you select a million gallons, you are guaranteed every day to have a billion gallons come through that pipeline. Drought, no drought, rain, no rain. You have a billion gallons of water guaranteed to your city or whatever number you guys, you don't choose to sit at. What that cost is roughly forty-four, twenty-four dollars and forty-four cents an acre foot. What that equates to is there's two payments. We broke it, we broke it in half. So you could pay half there this year and half next year. That's twenty-seven thousand dollars this year, twenty-seven thousand dollars next year. If you were to select a million gallons a day and that reserves you the rights for those water. And all the money that's collected in that is going to go into our pipeline design. A lot of people have asked, well, is that money refundable or what do y'all, how do y'all use all that money? Our pipeline is, design is going to be tens of millions of dollars. With the whole hundred million gallons, we're only collecting about four million ga- four million dollars. So we're only collecting maybe five percent, ten percent of the cost. We've already put in tens of million dollars ourself and we're going to keep doing that. But the customers have to put some skin in the game to show that they are actually interested and want this water. So that's what this reservation contract is for. So that would be reserving the right for those waters. And then about a year from now, we will come back to you with what they call the take or pay contract. So the best way I can describe it now is we'll be going on a date. If you decide to, we go, I'm asking you out for dinner. That's what the reservation contract is. And then a year from now, we're going to come back and we're going to do a merit proposal. And y'all can decide if y'all like us, you want to keep, keep doing that. And it'll be a take or pay contract for whatever that, whether it's ten dollars, a thousand, fifteen dollars, a thousand, whatever that number is. And then you'll be signing a long-term contract to get that water to you. And you don't pay anything to us again until we're actually producing water. When we turn the meter on and water's flowing through that pipe, that's when your next payment is, when we're actually giving you water. So that was a lot of questions, uh, out of information. Again, please, if you have any more questions that you guys have.
Yeah, I guess, you answered this in Eagle Side, but it's like, say, we, we buy, we sell, okay, we want a million gallons of water. That's what you're selling us. Like if we use eighty gallons, you say, no, you bought a million, you're paying for a million.
It's a, it's a take or pay contract. You're buying that water, you're, you're using that water.
And then like if we figure out we buy too much, we go back to you because y'all are the ones that could sell the water. We can't sell water.
We're not, yeah, we're, so this is not a, we're not going to allow inner, inner, inner water trading on the pipeline. We don't want any conflict between any of our partner cities. If you're a community that bought more than you needed, we will put that back in the open market, say, hey, does somebody else on the pipeline need a half a million gallons because Aransas Pass doesn't need it? So company says, another city says yes, and they're going to pay the exact same price. We're not raising prices. We're not changing prices. We're not, you can't make money back. It's, everyone's paying the same price. It's just going to be even. Everyone pays the same. We're very, we're going to make sure every community, whether you're the City of Corpus, City of Aransas Pass, or you're Hondo, y'all are all, we're all in this together through this project.
And I've had other questions. People ask if y'all have had any major industrial sites wanting to sign on to your project yet.
So we've had a couple industrial customers. So there, if you go back to slide sixteen, they do have, um, they pay a higher rate for that reservation contract. But we are not going to serve them directly. Any of the industrial customers who have bought water, we are going to turn that over to whoever owns that water, uh, CCN. So if it's a city, if it's a water district, well, it'll be their customer in the long run. We're just, they're reserving the water for us because they're scared like some of the cities are. They want to make sure they have enough water for their production lines and things, but we're not going to be the in seller to them. Whoever's community is going to sell them that water, they're just already reserving it for you.
Okay.
We, yeah, we don't want to work direct with anybody. We only want to give water to the cities. And the cost of water is the cost of water. We are state agency. We don't make money. We're not for profit. So whatever that cost is, what's it going to be, that's what we're going to turn over to you guys.
I have a few questions. I want, when I want to make sure I understand you correctly.
Yes.
So to reserve, or whatever you call it, the reservation list, a million dollars of water. We have to pay twenty-seven thousand dollars this year, twenty-seven thousand dollars next year. In two or three years, whether it be, we're going to have a date, meet for dinner. At this point, we have not gotten any water. Decided we want to buy in or not. We want to buy in, we get water. We don't want to buy in, we've lost fifty-two thousand dollars. Was that correct?
It's, yes, that money is not refundable. All that money is going into the pipeline design. And as we're dating, we're planning the pipeline is how we're going to get it from here to Hondo or wherever else. I'm going to be designing and paying engineers to get that water to you. If you decide you don't want it, well, we've already spent that money on getting the water to you. So that's not refund, I mean, we, we can't refund that money.
Okay, and as far as if we have excess water, why? Because you said you're going to put it back on the market. We've repaid for it. So now you're selling it again. So now you've basically sold that water twice.
No, we, you, we've lowered your take or pay contract. So say, y'all took, y'all did a take or pay contract for a million gallons, but y'all don't need it. And y'all are going to, we're going to reduct your take or pay to five hundred thousand. So you're only paying for five hundred thousand. And we're going to let somebody else on the pipeline. Pay, pay your, they're going to, they're going to pay your, what you agreed to. So we're basically going to move that contract over to someone else. So we're not making any extra money. We're just changing it so you don't have to pay for it. Someone else wants it.
Gotcha. Okay, I just want a clarification on this, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not reselling it or taking new reservations or anything like that. We're just going to.
And how often can we renew the contract?
Well, the first contract will be thirty years because that'll be the, uh, plant, that'll be the infrastructure we're going to take out. Our bond's going to be a thirty-year bond.
As, as far as the city for our water usage. Can we do it yearly? Can we do a?
No, everyone will be on a thirty-year con- on the contract because that's our, we're, we're going, we're going to be six billion dollars in debt for this. And you guys are going to be, now again, you can, if you're not going to be using your water, I guarantee you there, we have a waiting list of, so we've sold out of the hundred MGD. I have a waiting list of people who want the next round of water. So we'll find someone that will buy that water from you.
But, so say today we sign a contract for a million dollars. What if in five years we need, or a million gallons of water?
There you go. He's got, he's got an answer for it.
So everything we're designing, if you will go up, I think it's leave slide nine. Uh, no slide, uh, go to eight. Okay, we'll kind of leave it there. So that's Harbor Island. Everything on our infrastructure, we're building, we're planning to go up to five hundred MGD long-term. Right now, phase one is a hundred MGD. So through this process, we're going to come back and ask all of our existing customers, when we're going to start phasing up for the next hundred million gallons. All right, so we have enough interest to go build another hundred MGD. Do you guys want to purchase any more water? So you're going to get first rights or refusal to say, yes, we want another million gallons. Or no, we don't, we don't need a hundred million, a million gallons. We need two hundred fifty thousand gallons or something. You'll, we'll ask you first and you can say yes or no. And then we'll go to the next person on the list as we go through it. So our first, first in is going to be the first ones to get asked to reserve more water if you guys want it or not.
Right.
So you're protecting yourself through further rounds.
That's an additional water. But say it's a thirty-year lease, you said. What if in two years we decide we don't need a million gallons? Are we obligated to pay for the million for the thirty years?
Well, we believe that water will, someone else will happily buy that water from you.
Yeah, like if we don't need it, we can call Travis, say, hey, we don't need this. He'll say, okay, I'll sell it to somebody.
We, we have, right now, we have over three dozen cities and water districts who want it. I'll put it out there. Hey, guys, one city X needs more. And I guarantee you, I'm already going to have a list of people wanting more. I have a list of people who want to get on, we already sold out. We have the hundred MGD is basically gone. We are saving some water for you because your mayor and staff had asked us, we started negotiations, so we saved some for you. I have a list of people who want more water, or they want to buy in the next round. So we'll find somebody who wants that water. And maybe it takes six months, you know, it might take a couple of months. There's plenty of people who want this water.
So, yeah, I just want to make sure the city's not having paper water that we're not going to use and that within a certain amount.
We will do, we will work everything with you to get that water to someone else who wants it. Again, it might take a little while to find a customer. Maybe it won't, we, we might be able to sell it within twenty-four hours, somebody else who wants it. Um, there's a lot of need out there. There's a, this is a huge problem. Like I told you, we're two hundred and seventy million gallons of deficit in two years.
Right, and I, and I understand that. Um, okay.
Um, Mayor and Council, just, just for FYI, our, our usage is one point four MGDs. That, that is where the City of Aransas Pass is at.
And I think it's like one-six during the summer months, isn't it? Or some, yeah, okay.
But, um, there is no action today. This is just a presentation.
Yeah, we want it so that way you can get more out and the, the council can know what was going on. You got any questions here?
Just whether, um, you said this, uh, D cell plant's going to be in Harbor Island. So whether Aransas Pass participates or not. You're still going to be running the pipe through Aransas to the other areas.
It's going to come to y'all's coastal head right here at the bay and how it gets from there to point B, I don't know yet. We're working on that now. But it might come through Aransas Pass, it might turn around and go to Eagle Side. I don't know the answer to that today. What we're doing is we're finalizing the last couple of, there's about four or five customers like yourself who we have water saved for. They're going through this process to decide if they want or not. Once that's done, then we're going to set, okay, we have to get the pipeline. It's going to, this house has to get from point A to point B and get there. So I, I don't know how the water, if it is or not coming directly through.
Do you have an, a guesstimate date on by when you need an answer?
Y'all, so y'all have been given thirty days to, um, in good faith negotiation, we were holding the water for y'all to make a decision if y'all would like to participate or not. There'll be other, there's possibility for other rounds down the way. But again, the first hundred customers, they have two advantages. One is they're part of that initial pipeline infrastructure. So once we put the pipeline in, if you come in second, you got to get to the pipeline. We're not coming to you. We're going to do our best to get to you as close as possible on the first round. And whoever's also in the first round, when we go, we phase up to go again, we're going to ask you first, do you need any more water? So those are the two benefits of being on the first round. And then there, I mean, there might be possibilities. If you don't join now to join in later, I just can't guarantee if or when that's going to be.
So, so you said thirty days. So what is that deadline date?
I will give you thirty days from this council meeting because we've, we're, y'all have a good faith negotiated with this.
There's no money changing hands. And it's like at the end of thirty days, Travis said, you want water? We'll say, yeah, well, give us your first payment. We'll say, we don't need it. And he'll say, okay, no harm. I'll sell it somewhere else, pretty much.
Yeah, someone else will.
And I think, I think he's still, uh, is still on board about sometime next, this time next year is when you'll have a rough eye or a good estimate of what the water.
I, we're anticipating by midsummer.
And you'll know what the, what the price per thousand will be pretty close.
And a better, and a better timeline other than twenty-twenty-nine. We'll try to be within a general timeline. Yes, that's all goals we're working on right now through this process. Again, I don't, I don't want this to be, this isn't a hard sales pitch. I'm going to tell you what, what we're doing. If y'all would like to participate, you think it's good for your community, we would love to have you be part of it. If you're not sure, you don't want to know, we wish you the best. And there's no hard feelings. We just want to give you the information so that y'all can make the best decision moving forward. Um, like I said, we have a little over three dozen cities and water districts who, this works for them because it works for them. There was a couple handful that said that they, they just couldn't do it. So, you know, there's no, we, we want to give you the information if it's something that y'all like.
Travis, you, you made a comment and I, I want to make sure I understand you completely because I'm not certain that I do.
Okay.
You made a comment that the first round, we have to go to the pipeline. The pipeline won't come to us. Does that mean we have to go drill or lay pipe to your pipeline?
The first hundred MGD customers, we're going to do everything in our power to get the pipeline as close to where you want it as possible. I'm not saying I'm going to run it right next to your water plant. I'm going to say, we're going to take you into consideration as we're laying out a grid. And we're going to put all the customers on the map with our engineers. And we're like, okay, if we, we can go this easement here, this easement here, we'll get it to you. The second round, the pipe's already in the ground. So I can't move the pipeline again. So if you don't get on the first round, you've got to come to us. You've got to make, extend a pipeline to wherever our line ended up being. Cause like, we're not going to rebuild new pipeline. And make everyone pay for a customer who came in after the fact. That's not fair to the, everyone who joined in to begin with.
So if we were to, if we were to join within the next thirty days, when you do the first round, you will bring the water to us?
I will bring it to you as close as we can possibly get through the engineering process.
So we still have to run pipe to your pipe?
Every, every community is going to have to get a little bit from here to there. It could be two hundred yards. It could be a quarter of a mile. I don't know. What I'm saying is we're going to do everything in best effort to, our engineer is going to meet with y'all's staff, your public works. Here's where our tanks are. Here's where this is. Okay, well, we're looking at this easement, this easement. Well, if we get this easement, we're six hundred yards closer to you than we would have been if we went this way. We're going to do in best faith, but I can't promise you where it's going to be because there's pipeline easements, there's landowners, there's a lot of things we have to fight through. What I'm saying is we're going to do our best to get as close to you as possible. But once we build the pipeline, it's in the ground. I can't change it after that.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure I understood what you were saying. That's all.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that everybody knows that's been interested in all of this. We use one point four million gallons of water a day. At, that's forty-two million a month. At fifteen dollars a thousand, that's twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars a day. Or two, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a month. Just so y'all know what this equates out to.
Oh, yeah, because what's a, what's a, what's the rate for per thousand now? Like four, four fifty, I think, isn't it?
Four fifty, yeah.
Four dollars fifty, yeah.
So that's quadrupling your water bills.
I, I, I agree. Today, we are not the cheapest water.
Yeah.
We're talking the next five, ten, twenty years. And if you can buy water for four dollars in fifteen years from now, God bless you. I want to know where you got it because I'm going to buy some of it too.
I understand that. And I just want everybody to know the figure so that when they get a fifteen-dollar water bill, they'll know why.
Well, the, the good thing about that is also is because we're target of twenty-twenty-nine, we have three years to educate, work with the community. Here's why we're doing this. Here's what the process is. And you're not just going to overnight, oh, your water bill went to this. Y'all have time to work this into your system of how it gets it. Maybe you buy half the water need from us and you buy half from someone else. Or you do your own water plan where you're, you do your own, I know there's a couple of communities around here that are going to build a, uh, Brackish D cell and they're going to do ours. So they're going to diversify into two pots. You have some time to decide what is the best blend for you guys. You know, we want to be here to support you in any way you can. We know right now, we have a need for water in this area and this is our fix to do that. And what we want to do is give every community their chance. If you want drought-free water, whatever that amount is, you can purchase that. And drought-free water does come at a more expensive cost. I will tell you that we've had major rain events in the Oasis Basin in the last, this wasn't a wet, uh, dry summer. The last couple of months have been terrible. We've had a lot of major rain events. Not one of them has made it to any one of our lakes this year.
Okay, so we get back into the, and next year we have rains or it'd probably take two back-to-back hurricanes to fill up our water system, probably. So we have water. We don't need this water anymore. What is it, where does it go?
Well, we're, so we're, we're not stopping building. Well, we're, so we're, we're not stopping building this plant, because if that, I hope that does happen, because we got it, we're, we need, we're not going to make water before twenty twenty-nine, and I think we're going to be short of water well before then, so I hope that does happen, but we know another drought is coming. We've had four in the last twenty years, of major events like this, where we've had to go back to stage three and all those types of water restrictions. So we are not going to stop, you're buying water for the future, and that's what we have to plan for. It, it may rain next, I, I hope it does, God willing, it does rain and we fill up those lakes again.
No, I'm talking, that's what, it does like fill up and everything is hunky-dory like, like it was. Are we still committed to this contract, or can we shut it off?
When you take the take-or-pay contract, you are committed, again, if you decide you don't want it, other people will buy it. The Lake Corpus Christi was full nineteen months ago, I was waterskiing on it, and so, just because the lake is full now doesn't mean it's going to be full when you, when we need it. So you're going to have rain events, non-rain events, things are going to happen through this process. What we're trying to do is provide drought-resistant water source.
And I think, well, we had this problem in nineteen eighty-four, I was, what, five years old, so I don't remember much. But me and Travis talked that there's a difference between this drought and that drought, and I mean, that's something you explained like you did to me about the aquifers.
If you can go back up to, I think it's slide two, please.
Yeah, but you can be careful not to drain the aquifers, because then your farmers are going to suffer.
That's the problem right now.
That's why we're, that's why we're doing what we're doing, I, yes, we are in a severe drought. But if you look at rainfall over the last three years, it's not, we're not, you know, feet off of water, we're inches away from what our normal rainfall is. It's because we've sucked the ground dry everywhere, not just, it's not a Corpus thing, it's all the way through. The Bear County uses over one point five billion gallons of water, and they're using, a lot of that water comes from the same water sources, the creeks of aquifers that push up water through the spring to feed rivers. That San Antonio to Kyle, um, area, the fastest-growing area in the world, I mean, in the, in the US, as far as growth. It's still, people are coming, they're going to keep drinking, so we might have a rain event, what I'm saying is, people are going to keep drinking that water to, if we don't have a drought-free resistance of an endless ocean supply, I mean, that's why I'm here. I, I don't, I don't want to be here at the city council meeting every night away from my family, but I have two little girls that I want to live in South Texas, I live here, I hunt and fish here. I, I want my girls to, if we don't get a water supply like this, we don't, we don't live here in South Texas like we used to.
Mary, do you know how many, like, the average household, how many gallons of water they use a month?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay. Just curious.
I think an average household's around three to five.
I was going to say.
That's what I was thinking, too, around three thousand.
Three to five thousand gallons a day.
I lived in mine, but there's only two of us, and it was two thousand, I lived at my rent house, and they're using eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
So, a month.
Yeah.
So that would be, you know, twenty to forty dollars more a month, probably around thirty.
But, if you don't have water. Well, I don't see how, if you're going from four dollars and change to ten or fifteen, you're talking doubling if not tripling, because the cost has doubled or tripled.
I think people are going to be a little more conservative with water, too.
Let me just ask you, did you say that once, let's say the city does this, and we sign that pay-or-take contract, there's no, once we do that, we can't get out of the contract?
You can't get out, you can say you don't need this much water, and we will find, we will help find other customers who want that water, and maybe relieve you of that burden. What I'm saying is, I can't, it's going to be a case-by-case best, I don't, they, I could get rid of it in a day, it could take me six months to find a customer who wants that water. We'll be happy to help you in that timeframe, but it is a take-or-pay contract until we're able to find an off-taker for that water. Again, I think, I, I, it's going to get better, I mean, it works before it gets better, I think, down the way.
And that's a thirty-year contract?
Yes, because that'll be for the, uh, our bond that we have to take out to build it, that'll be, it'll have to match those same terms.
And let me just ask another question, let's say right now, let's say we were to do it, and we signed in for one point, one, one point six MGDs. Our city is growing, let's say five, ten years from now, we need more, what's the process to add additional water?
Like I said, so we're going to be able to build up to five hundred MGD, and we're going to start that, actually, the next hundred MGD is something that we might be talking about in the next few months, but we're going to be hitting phases where we're going to keep growing up, we're going to be listening to you guys, and y'all are going to be telling us, hey, we need more water. When can we start phasing up, maybe we scale up by another fifty MGD, maybe we do twenty-five, maybe we do a hundred and fifty MGD. We're going to be listening to you guys, there's a process, it'll, it won't, you know, we can't snap our fingers and do it, but we need to have open communications between the cities who are taking it, and us to know when you're meeting milestones. I have a couple of communities in, just out of San Antonio, that they've already said by twenty thirty, they need an extra, they're ready to buy double what they have now, because that's what their projections show, so they're already saying, alright, on the next hundred, save us this many gallons, because we already know that's what we're going to be. So we want to plan and work with you guys, but we just have to be a communication level between us, and, I mean, we'll be talking all the time. So with all the communities that have signed on, what we do is, right now, we've done a bi-monthly, once we get in the process, probably go down to monthly, where I'm going to give updates, hey, here's where we're at, this is where we're going through the process, we're doing that, and I'll ask you back, where are you guys at, what do you need? And we want to keep that conversation going for the next thirty years, is how we build and design this thing.
So basically, what I'm hearing is, because earlier you said that Corpus Christi has bought into it, we get our water from Corpus Christi. That's alarming, because if we don't buy into this, and we still get our water from Corpus Christi, chances are we're going to be paying fifteen plus. So we need to figure out, or find out what Corpus is going to do, how they're going to source our water if we don't buy into this, because we may be either forced to buy into this.
Or they charge us more.
Or they charge us more, or we also, I would really like Sal to look into possibly getting grants to where we can be self-suff, or self-sufficient with water over time, and not be dependent on other people or other cities to provide our water, even if it's just subsidizing our water, if there's grants available. Um, not saying that your program's not good, I'm just trying to.
Ma'am, I understand.
Trying to see what we can do to minimize the cost to our citizens. Because I, if Corpus is buying into this, they're, you, they're writing on the wall, we're going to be paying a higher price.
Yeah, well, we, San Pat Water District, we got our water, but if we got into water business, that fifteen dollars probably turned into about thirty.
Yeah.
If we did it, it would, it would be, it would make their price.
Do we know that, or can we get grants for this as a city?
Well, that billion dollars that, that bill Ford, he's talking about, they're pretty much the ones that helped write that bill, so I mean.
That's another, there's, there's several large-scale water projects, because this, this isn't a South Texas project, this is, everyone outside of East Texas is having the same problem we're having now. So there's lots of major firms and our major water entities that are looking for this fund. What the one benefit we have is, we're the only large-scale regional project that is trying to solve multiple communities' waters, not just one, like the Coastal Bend region, we're trying to serve all that whole new waste basin and part of that San Antonio, so we're, that's how we're building out. Um, again, I wanted to make sure y'all have the information, I want y'all to do what's best for Aransas Pass, I, you know, I support you guys in any way y'all, you know, believe me, I'm, I'm really here to support your community, we just want to give y'all all the information. Well, one thing I will say, if y'all choose to buy this, you have a direct tap off that line for the amount of water you have, and that's your water. No one can take it away from you, no one can do anything with it, it's your water. That's what we want to provide for the, that's the security blanket we want to provide for the communities. Is it a little more expensive today? Absolutely, I'm not going to lie about that. But you're talking twenty, thirty years from now, that price is going to be in that same ballpark. The only variable we have with that take-or-pay contract is electricity cost. That, that contract we're going to put with the people who are going to be building and running it, that price is for thirty years, they're going to, it's fifteen dollars or fourteen dollars, whatever that price ends up being, outside of electricity cost, that's the only variable that is allowed to this process.
Again, we need to find out what's going to happen with our current water supply, where they're getting, going to get their water, and that's going to be the ultimate deciding factor ultimately.
I understand.
And our citizens need to understand, if we buy into this, it's probably going to be because of a have-to, so we don't have that up-charge from Corpus or San Pat County, what have you, and that's what I want them to understand. We're here to make the best decision for our community. And there are some hard decisions, guys, that we have to make, and it's not fun. But know, whatever decision we make as a city council is because we feel it's the right thing to do, but more importantly, it's the best thing to do. So it may not be the most popular decision, but it's something that we're going to have to do potentially. And that's, we still have to do a lot more research, but we do thank you for your time, absolutely, one hundred percent, and we just need, me.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to have discussions on this, I think we have until, um, December third, is what, um, Mr. Pusky said, so.
Yeah, we'll save that water till then, then we will have to give it, because we're, we're state agency, we have to work with everyone equally, and I have to, I'd have to give that to someone else who wanted to.
And right now, just for your info, we reserved, I think it's one point four MGDs, I think that's what we reserved.
I, I saved one point five, because I wasn't sure, so I gave y'all a little bit of wisdom there, so I can make the right decision.
I've been talking to Mary, I've been looking into this nonstop for probably ever since we first spoke with Travis, so I mean, I'm, this is, this water deal is, I mean, Travis knows, it changes by the, by the hour, I mean, and it's, a lot of it, a lot of this has to do with, right on the other side of the Harbor Bridge.
Well, it's pretty, pretty much going to dictate what we do.
Yep, and right now, it's getting better, but it's not totally there yet, and who knows if that's going to happen.
We got time for it, I think what we need, uh, next couple of weeks, is, there's a lot of public input on it also.
Oh yeah.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is the opportunity that we're calling for public input right now, those that are watching on YouTube and everywhere else. Because if we don't have it, and we make the decision, it is what it is.
Did Ingleside and Rockport do the same and, um, reserve some water?
Ingleside and Portland has already, there's a couple of other cities I don't want to, that hasn't voted on it, but in your region that are in the same process that you are.
Ingleside and Portland have reserved the water.
Council has already approved.
They're already paying, they're paying a reservation cost already.
I'm just concerned if we, we need to look and see what our options are in that aspect, if we don't, if that's going to cost us more than joining, getting in on it, because it could.
We get our water from the San Pat Municipal Water District, but they get their water from Corpus.
Exactly, so that's the problem, then you say, well, Aransas didn't want in, so, well, we're going to charge them down.
Well, what about San Pat Water District, are they going to buy into it?
They haven't, as of now.
They, yeah, they're not going to mess with it.
I don't know, we need to look at everything.
They're pretty much loyal to Corpus. But, no, I mean, that's definitely something we got to talk about, that's.
It's a lot of good information, thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Alright, thank you, y'all have a good one, Felicity.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Travis.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, now we're going to go into announcements.
Yes, um, we have, um, two announcements today, the first one is a workshop meeting, um, I mean, a workshop meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November the nineteenth, and that's at six PM. We have several discussion items, um, one of them is the capital projects, um, list, amendments to an aggressive solicitation ordinance, a, um, city mural projects, um, a draft ordinance on short-term rentals, and a, oh, a SIP, and creating a SIP and drink district. That's also on the agenda for, for the nineteenth. And then the second, uh, announcement is, it's just a reminder that the Fall Feast Dinner is scheduled for Thursday, November the twentieth. That's at five o'clock at the Civic Center. Um, once again, the meal will be catered by Butter Churn. It is a free community event, so we invite everyone to come and enjoy a great meal.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, now we're going to go into citizens' comments. Hey, I know that guy.
The illustrious CJ Grisham.
Hello.
Hi CJ.
How's it going?
CJ.
My name is CJ Grisham, I'm not a resident here, and yes, I do own more than one suit. Last time I was here, about a year and a half ago, I was wearing this suit and handing the previous city council a bunch of lawsuits. Uh, so you might know me from such viral videos as the March fourth city council meeting and the January sixteenth city council meeting. That's not what I'm here for. Um, uh, as, as you probably know, today started my trial, where, uh, your, your previous corrupt police chief decided that they were going to try and charge me and my client, well, they did, uh, with criminal acts for using speech. I, I just came here to thank you, um, because I was made aware that this council, um, did issue a vote, um, and a resolution trying to get these bogus charges dismissed, and I appreciate that, I really do. Um, but I, I, I know it's ultimately not your decision that I'm facing a jury today and tomorrow, and potentially Wednesday. But I did want to come here, and after the first day of trial today, just thank you, um, for your service. Thank you for doing the right thing, um, you know, as a First and Second Amendment attorney, I don't, I don't always agree with what my clients have done, I don't. But I'm a combat veteran, I went to foreign countries and literally nearly died, I'm a hundred percent combat disabled. You'll see me moving a lot, because I was blown off of a road, and I've got back injuries, I'm a hundred percent disabled. And I fought for the rights of foreigners who lived in dictatorial countries to be able to experience the same kind of freedoms that we have here. And then I come home and I see kind of what's happening in my own country, where the freedom of speech is being crapped upon, um, and other rights are being crapped upon, and, and that's why, instead of enjoying my retirement, I decided at forty-six years old, I'm going to go to law school. And, uh, that's what I did, and, and I, I don't always have to agree with the speech of my clients, but you know what? I will die for those rights. My oath is a lifelong oath, and I, I don't care if they send me to jail for six months and two thousand dollar fine, which is the max that I'm facing, I will do it again. And I will spend another six months in jail defending someone's right to speak. Um, thankfully, I've heard from, since y'all have been elected, I've heard from a lot of people down here, they, they're really happy with you. Um, I'm, I'm glad that y'all are doing the right thing and understanding, you know, sometimes people just aren't going to like you. And they're going to say things that quite frankly are very offensive. But the whole purpose of the First Amendment is to protect speech with which we disagree. I disagree with you vehemently, but I will support your right one hundred percent to say it, and that's all I was doing that day when I came down here. And that's all Mr. Followwell was doing, uh, when he came down here, um, and that's all many people are going to come down here when they do. Um, and, and so again, I just wanted to thank you, I appreciate your service, I, I appreciate, is that my time? Um, may I ask for an additional minute? I know some places I'm able to do that, may I just ask for an additional minute?
Go ahead.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, um, I apologize, and I will shut up after one minute, there are other people. Um, but it, it's, it's so important that, and I see some other veterans in this off, in this, uh, audience. Um, and it hurts me so much when I hear a veteran say, you shouldn't be saying that, or you shouldn't be carrying your gun that way, or you shouldn't be, you know, insert the right that we have. Um, you know, that whole, you have a right, just because you can doesn't mean you should, well, yeah, but just because you do, and you probably shouldn't, doesn't mean it should be criminalized. Um, and, and that's just where I come from, and, uh, uh, to the extent that I need to, I do appreciate all of you. Uh, I do apologize if anything was offensive that I said last time I was here, um, but again, I'll do it again. Uh, in defense of liberty, in defense of free speech, and in defense of our constitution, because that's what I took a lifelong oath to, and I thank you. And that's actually what I just heard someone take an oath to today, and so every single one of you have taken that same oath, just in a different capacity, so thank you.
Thank you, CJ.
Thank you, CJ.
Anyone else wants to speak? No?
No.
Donald don't want to speak either. Okay, alright, well, I guess we'll move into the consent agenda.
There's no, there's no consent agenda.
Nothing there. Okay, so now we'll go into action items. And we're going to consider an act on legislation recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administr, administration of justice, and recognizing November third, November third through the seventh, two thousand twenty-five, as Municipal Court Week. And, and, we're going to make this resolution. And recog, recognition of Municipal Court Clark Week, a resolution rec, recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. And where's Henry? There she is.
Do y'all want to come just down to the, just come down here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to invite y'all, you're having another reception Thursday from eleven thirty to one thirty.
Oh, nice.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Your, your office?
Thank you.
Where are we at? Okay. Now we're gonna move into Consider an Act on Approving the Leadership Aransas Pass Class X Community Improvement Project for the Con Brown Harbor Sign.
The Leadership Class Project.
This is a continuation from, from last week's, um, meeting, and we've got Macy Marie here from the Leadership Class to give a presentation on the, on the Con Brown Harbor Sign.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Yes, yes.
I hope you didn't forget about the sign. Good sign.
No.
We're representing Leadership Aransas Pass Class X. Um, at our last meeting, the sign was tabled so that we could take another look at placement options. Um, since then, we met with Mary and Elise, um, and went over a new spot. Um, we're proposing that the sign be placed facing the water, it's visible to traffic going in and out over that bridge. Um, also, it's gonna be visible to thousands of boaters that go in and out of that harbor, that channel. Um, I think that it'll attract people, it's gonna be a bright, um, that sign above. It's super bright, I think that it's gonna catch a lot of people's attention, um. We're not asking anything from the council besides your support, yeah. Um, that's really it, um, we talked a lot about it last time, um. Uh, yeah.
It, it'll be located right there in the parking lot, and what you see right there, those are the fishing tables, so it'll be to the right of the fishing tables.
It's gonna face out to the water.
Yeah, I went over there, I, that's where y'all were talking about, right, cause I took pictures, I, I think it's a perfect spot, I'm, there's plenty enough room there.
And you'll be able to see it perfectly from the Dill Miller.
Into the harbor, they can see that it's-
Good idea.
And when you're coming from Port A, going across the bridge, you'll be able to see it.
Oh, nice.
And then people on their boats going in and out are gonna be like-
And how big will it be?
Um, so the cement footing on the bottom is sixteen feet, um, so essentially sixteen feet, the sign, but each letter is-
How high?
Um, I think it's about four feet.
It was about four feet.
Yeah, about four feet each letter.
I think it's gonna look really good.
Yeah, have you ever seen, like, on a cruise, um, people taking pictures with those big signs and like Cosmo, or, yeah, it's, it's essentially like that. Um, yeah, they're, they're the dimensions of the sign.
And then y'all also, in our last meeting, y'all also discussed about safety concerns, people wanna get out, take pictures. Beautiful parking lot out there, they can park, they can go up there, nice little scenery with, uh, with the sign, uh, there'll be no traffic concerns unless someone really decides to, they wanna go into the harbor.
We also changed, um, that the sign will be illuminated now, um, so that'll just also draw way more attention to the harbor as well.
Can you see it at night?
Yeah, if it's, if it's lit, yeah.
If it's lit, okay.
So we changed the location and added lights as well.
I'm good with it, I know this is the one, um, Elise and Mary went to go look at the site.
Will it be solar lighting or electrical lighting?
Um, electrical lighting. And, uh, the Iconic Sign Group has an engineer and a project manager that's assigned to us, to this project. Um, the other day, I talked to him about lighting it, and he went around and drove around out there, and he says that it's like, it's totally feasible, so.
Okay, alright, well, I make a motion to approve the Leadership Aransas Pass Class, um, egg, five?
Class X, Class X.
Class X. Community Improvement Project for the Con Brown Harbor Sign.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move into Consider an Act on the, Consider an Act on a Renewal of Interlocal Agreement with San Trisho County for Food Service Inspections and Permitting of All On-Site Sewerage Facilities for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-six, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, at an annual fee each year of seven thousand dollars, seven thousand fifty dollars and zero cents.
Yeah, this is, this is a routine renewal that we have, um, between the city and Sandpat County for the inspection of, of our food service establishments and our onsite facilities permitting those sites. Um, it's, it's a two-year renewal, it's, um, seven thousand fifty dollars each year. Uh, Mr. Arroyo is, is here, should you have any questions?
Okay, and it's already, it's already budgeted.
Yes, sir, it's budgeted.
Okay.
Here if you have any questions.
I think I'm good.
You're good?
Quick one, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Consider an Act of Renewal of Interlocal, Interlocal Agreement with San Trisho County for Food Service Inspections and Permitting of All On-Site Sewerage Facilities for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-six, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, at an annual fee each year of seven thousand fifty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, alright, motion carries.
Mayor, before you go to the next item, I don't believe action was taken on the very first resolution, the one regarding Municipal Court Week, so if we can go back to that item and take action.
My bad. You're right.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, um, to Consider an Act on Resolution Recognizing the Importance of Municipal Courts, the Rule of Law, and the Fair and Impartial Administration of Justice and Recognizing November third through the seventh, two thousand twenty-five, as Municipal Court Week.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, now the motion carries. Okay, now, Consider an Act on the Issuance of a RFQ for Economic Development Consultant Services.
The purpose of this item is to issue an RFQ, uh, an RFQ, I'm sorry, for economic development services. The purpose is to have a consultant to work closely with the city to attract business prospects and look for funding opportunities for economic development. Um, the Municipal Development District has agreed to fund these services for a two-year period. Um, we went to them, uh, last month, and that action was approved by the MDD Board. So now, what we're coming to the council for is the authority to issue the RFQ. We would have to publish for two weeks, so we anticipate bringing this back to council to award, um, in early December.
And just so, anyone who doesn't know, this, uh, MDD Board is funded through sales taxes, so this will actually be an employee that is paid for through sales taxes for anyone from all over the place, shopping in those, any of the stores. So I just wanna get that out there, so in case someone didn't understand how the MDD Board was funded.
So to, to be clear, this will be an employee of Aransas Pass?
Yes.
No, they would be a consultant, not an employee.
Yeah, they won't actually be on the workforce, but they won't actually be an employee with the city, it's a consultant, consultant service, is what it is.
So will they be-
Contract.
Contract, yes.
Will it be a full-time contract or a part-time?
It'll be a full-time contract.
It'll be a full-time contract.
They just won't have specific hours, they'll just, they'll be there when needed.
Yep. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion to Consider an Act on the Issuance of a Request for Qualifications RFQ for Economic Development Consultant Services.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, now, Consider an Act on Approving a No-Cost Change Order Request from Sinarama for the City of Aransas Pass Welcome Sign, that's a good word.
Yeah, this is, um, as you said, this is a no-cost change order, um, Sig, Sinarama is requesting an additional forty-five days. Their contract, um, had an ending date in which they needed to complete the project. However, there has been a delay with tech start in the reviewing process and the approval process. So, so that won't be penalized, they requested an additional forty-five days.
Okay, okay, alright, do we have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion on approving a No-Cost Change Order Request from Sinarama for the City of Aransas Pass Welcome Sign Project.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Okay, now, Consider an Act on Accepting a Grant in the Amount of Three Hundred Thousand Dollars for a Water Tender from the Texas Forestry Service.
Mayor, Council, we've got a lot of things going on at the Fire Department, a lot of great things, you should be happy with all of the strides that we're making towards, uh, public safety in the Fire Department. Uh, this is a grant that I was unaware of, all of us were unaware of, uh, until about a month ago, and we were told that we were awarded grants that were applied for back in twenty eighteen. One of them was for a three hundred thousand dollar grant for a water tender, and on the next item, it's gonna be for a forty-five thousand dollar skid unit that goes on the brush trucks. It's a combination of a water tank and a pump.
So, so the, the first two items are really just to accept those two grants, uh, the one for three hundred thousand for the water tender, and then the forty-five thousand for the, for the skid unit. The third, the eight, eight point eight, which is, um, is for the, the funding, but we can, if we can act on the first two, and then we'll act on the last item.
Okay.
I'll make, make the motion, Consider an Act on Accepting a Grant in the Amount of Three Hundred Thousand for a Water Tender from the Texas Forestry Service.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alright, Consider an Act on Accepting a Grant in the Amount of Forty-five Thousand Dollars for a Brush Truck Skid Unit from the Texas Forestry Service.
I make a motion to Consider an Act on Accepting a Grant in the Amount of Forty-five Thousand for a Brush Truck Skid Unit from the Texas Forestry Service.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this the, is this the brush, uh, the tender, water tender?
More or less, yes, sir.
It's a, what is it, built in, the water built into the side of that?
Yeah, it's got a two thousand, it'll have a two thousand gallon water tank inside of it.
And I think pretty much, cause we've talked about this, like, you know, God forbid, we have another big fire out here in the brush, you can actually use that to fill the pump truck, that's pretty much, yeah.
And that, the water tank, it'll, we're actually, it's in the next agenda item, I'm getting ahead of myself, but we'll have a, a two thou, twenty-one hundred gallon drop tank that'll go on the ground that we can relay, shuttle, shuttle relay water to it, that other agencies can draft from and pull water from it as we go.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Okay, now, Consider an Act to Authorize Funding Up to Sixty-Two Thousand One Hundred Ninety Dollars from a Police and Fire Station Certificate of Obligation Bond to outfit the water tender with equipment and to cover the five percent cost share.
Yes, and, and, you know, I appreciate y'all accepting the grant for us, um, but with that, there is a five percent cost share for each grant. It's fifteen thousand for the, three hundred thousand dollar for the water tender, and then twenty-two fifty for the skid unit. Uh, the remainder of that expense for the sixty-two, one ninety is for equipment to outfit, uh, the, the water tender.
Do we have it in the budget?
Yeah, well, it's, it's coming from the certificate, from the bond, from the police and fire, and it is an eligible use under that bond.
So the upgrades for the water tender, I just wanted to let you know, uh, we're gonna upgrade the water pump from, like, it's a traditional little, almost like a lawnmower pump, to a actual, by God, thousand gallon per minute fire engine pump, uh, with the associated fire hose that goes with it, and then the drop tank. And what that'll do is it'll qualify it as a reserve backup pumper, it'll actually be able to pump out a structure fire if we had to.
Okay. Alright, well, we got a motion?
I make a motion to Consider an Act to Authorize Funding Up to Sixty-Two Thousand One Hundred Ninety from the Police and Fire Station Certificate of Obligation Bond to outfit the water tender with equipment and to cover the five percent cost share.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, and with that, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
David, did you see Lou's outfit? You gotta come, you gotta come look.
People gonna see that, you're roasted.
Yeah, look at her shirt, dude.